Seeing that it's about seven, I'll this meeting to order. This is November the 12th, and it's a committee, the whole meeting. For those attending in person and online, please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on a publicly available website. I'd like to acknowledge that we're on the United States of First Nations land of the Hadassah, Tsimekut territory. I call this meeting to order at 7:00 P. M. Who to approve the agenda?
Second round.
Does anyone have any additions or amendments to the agenda? If not, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? So moved.
So moved, yeah.
Okay. I have one second. Just got an email from councillor Copeland that he's looking for a link.
All good. Just hold that discussion, maybe you want to make. It'd be up there in the radio wave somewhere. Yep.
Yep.
Okay, we'll carry on. Any discussion on motion? Signal for the discussion. I call a question. All who's in favor. Opposed? Say it is carried. Has everyone reviewed the minutes from the meeting of October? May I have a motion to adopt the minutes as presented? Move to adopt the minutes from October 7, 2025. Cal?
Second round.
Any discussion? No discussion? I call a question. Anyone opposed? Period. Next on the agenda is business arising from the minutes. All right, here we go. Five, one. Code of conduct and review. Hey, any discussion on the staff report?
Recommendation.
Ah, there you go. Yes. CEO Nelson Smith. Thank you, Chair Deck. What's, what would be good for discussion amongst council are the sections C and D, so foundation principles of responsible conduct, and then the standards of conduct, which sort of break out those foundational principles, and to reflect on the last three years, whether those, those principles reflect what you as a council is, is looking for out of the next council, and if there's any, any changes that reflecting on your experience would need to be brought forward for future councils.
May I speak to this? Certainly. Well, you know, I think that something important was brought up by our chair here. I was, when I was speaking to him, and you know, he said, a lot of what we have to deal with here is very meat and potatoes with our council. And I've always thought that everybody had a good act and had a good, you know, disposition when it came to this type of thing among our council. Very, very few times have I been disappointed in anybody. So I don't think, I think it's important to maintain this code of conduct, but I, I found everybody to be very factual, so. Anyone else?
Maybe Justin could put it there.
As a junior member here, I have to agree. I thought I can't remember one incident where the code of conduct was overrun. And I don't see any reason to change anything. But that'll just depend on the people who come after us. And we just, we expect the same quality that we've given in our term, which I think has been quite good. And, you know, it's fairly good to us having a code of conduct. Yes, and like many pieces of paper we've created, it's there to enforce and to back up what we actually want and what we expect, especially if somebody's acting in a way that's outside of it, right? Yeah, and on section C here, the important one to me is respect. And I think we've all given that and taken it in this term, and if there ever is an apology needed, I'm sure it would be given right away and freely. So in that respect, I don't think any changes are needed. A pretty solid document, and we've had no trouble following it. And we thank the CAO for bringing forward a very good one. So there is no method to move on this. We'll just move on to the next.
I may want one more.
Yes, certainly.
So Mayor Holborn can't be here tonight, but she did request that I put this Eli Amina's Knowledge Transfer Initiative on the, on the agenda for council to review and reflect on, on how you think you've done as a, as a board or a council over the last three years. I'm not sure from her whether or not she wanted it to come back, but definitely for some reflection from, from everybody on, on where you think you're at as an individual councillor, where we are as a, as a full council. And there's also an evaluation of the conduct of the CAO in, in regards to the council meetings and governance. So I would encourage everybody to go through that and maybe even fill it out. And, and then when Mayor Holborn's back, I can reflect with her on where she wants to go next with it.
Well, if I may, I think this one is a slam dunk. Everyone has done a great job, including the CAO, and I will sign my name to that. So when the mayor comes back and if she wants something written from me, she'll get it right away. But besides that, we've all done a better than average job here, including the CAO, including the Public Works Forum. Yes. And Deputy Dogg has done an excellent job there, too. So no, no need to carry on with this one. I think, I think everyone agreed with me that there are no protections here. Like the NC office orientation.
It's just included for information.
Okay, so we'll just put that in our back pocket. Valuation for boards and councils. That's what we've done.
Yep.
Yep. Good. I've been exceptionally good on the Waste Management Board and the Hospital Board, the AAA rating for me.
Excellent.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem.
Appreciate it. Okay, five, three. Oh, sorry, five, two. Staff report. Council renumeration review.
Deputy Finance Officer Janice is here. If there's any questions from council.
The chair, I'll ask the first question. Is there any limit to the increase for the councillors' statement?
Thank you, Chair Deck. There's not. It's completely up to council and, and taking the budget into consideration for that as well.
That's what I was hoping to hear. In my case, I'm not asking for anything. I'm more than happy with what I'm getting because this really is a giving back to the community job. It's it's not for the money. Doesn't really cost us anything to be here. So my, my point of view, I don't want to raise, but thank you anyway. Next.
I would, I would I would just suggest that it's, I think, healthy to keep up with the times. I'll take the raise. No problem. And I, I think that it also it keeps a way of attracting new people to do this. If there's a little bit of skin in the game, and if you can, you can take something out of it, right? Not everybody's like mature, well, the like councillor deck here, so we have to. Some new people may want to do it for an extra bit of money, you know, and maybe a family guy younger or something. And I think that keeps, it keeps an opportunity open there for, for, for maybe attracting more people than not when it comes to election time, right?
I stand corrected. Yes.
Well, to that council direct staff research provide options for a council remuneration review as part of the 2026 operating budget process.
Second. Anyone opposed? I say it's carried. Sounds good. Is five, three relocation of Ted Lewis Skate Park.
I'll speak a little bit to this if we if I can turn.
Yep, yep.
You know, I was over at the park, the skate park, and I checked it out the other day, and like, it's really rough. And I think I saw a number to resurface it, and it's ridiculous. I I, I think that maybe there's a bit of people that will use it in the summer and, and I don't think, I don't think it will affect the amount of people that use it if it's moved here. At all. I think it will be used just as much. And we still get to offer it, and then it's on a surface that's reasonable for it to be used for skating. That surface over there, and I was, it's not even really usable for that. But I definitely stand behind the move. And I think that will also clear up some area for us to consider doing new things with, some village property, right? And I think that's a positive thing right now. I, I actually think that that saying it to, to create some potential places to build, build houses is, is probably the best idea for our community because we don't have a lot of space to be able to do that. And I, I think there's enough room back there to have a little all the sack or self-division of some sort or. And I think that having the skate park relocated, you know, would, would make a big difference on, on our feelings and our, our ideas to be able to move forward, something like that, so.
Yes, couldn't agree more with you. I like the idea of having it over here. It's closer to where people are. Chances are not too much skullduggery will go on maybe behind here. But that's a minor point. The biggest thing is money-wise, it's the way to go. Not going to waste any money, so I'm all for that.
And you got a lot less distance to travel to come rip it up, right?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Yeah. And I still got my $200 trucks on my skateboard today. Yes, and a giant helmet. Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to staff, for staff recommend relocating the skate park components to the existing basketball court behind Community Hall while retaining the Ted Lewis Skate Park dedication. This option provides a lower cost solution, consolidates recreation space, and improves public visibility and use. So that's next. Recommend that council direct staff to relocate the existing skate park components to basketball court located behind the Keydall while retaining the Ted Lewis Skate Park.
I second that one. Any opposition to that motion?
Do you have councillor Copeland on mine now?
Good evening, councillor. Hello, sir.
Just give it a thumbs up.
Were you lucky enough to hear the second part of this motion?
I was, and I'm all in favor.
Very good, very good. Okay, I declare it's carried. Move along. Okay, now we go to the four billion operations report. Mergent Planning Coordinator Staff Report 33. So I assume we just accept this report?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Any discussion? So moving, accept this report in a second. I declare it's carried. Now we have a request for direction. The purpose for Saint Council is an overview of the 2026 to 2030 capital plan, including outstanding projects from 2025, and to see council's direction, project prioritization for 2026 to 2030.
Yes, sir. Two, two things. If, if, but I could request that the chair speak up. I see councillor Copeland having some, some trouble here.
I gave you a close-up of my ear.
Okay, sorry about that, councillor. I will speak up.
Thank you very much.
And then this second is Deputy Finance Officer Janice is here and could walk us through line by line on the budget, if that pleases council.
It does please me, and I was just going to ask her if she'd be kind enough to do that.
Yes.
Absolutely. If you look in front of you, you should see a document that looks like this. I printed off some extra copies, so it's easier to read in this.
Oh, you got it.
In this colored version, yeah.
Let's, let's move it.
And inside of here, as we work through the document, we will work through each year in the capital plan. And what we've done is we prioritize the projects for each year into higher priority projects and lower priority projects. Because as you will see by looking at this document, it's rather long, and there's a lot of projects in. So to take into consideration staff capacity, especially moving into 2026, we've, we put some recommendations into the note column as to what, what staff believe should maybe happen for each of these lines. So looking for council input and discussion on each. So on page two of this document, you'll see, we'll start with the outstanding projects from 2025 and outstanding projects from prior years that have kind of carried forward each year. Some of these are works in progress, so it would be wise to continue them on because they are partially done. But there are some on this list that haven't been started yet that it may make more sense to defer them to another year or remove them from the plan altogether. So the first item that we have on the list is the community planning document. This is from the housing grant that we received in 2024, I believe it was, to complete the official community plan and zoning bylaw, et cetera. And so there's, there's a little bit of budget remaining there. I believe CAO Nelson Smith, we had talked about things that we could maybe potentially use it for, or it could potentially be moved into a reserve. But I think at this point in time, it should maybe just carry forward to 2026 until we can figure out what we could use that funding for.
I agree. Area toward. Yes, sir. Through the chair. You have a recommendation set out here. Now, do we have to move these? Should we do all ones?
If, if I may, I think I would, I would only make a motion if you're looking at any changes outside of the recommendations that, that we made. I think that will make it a little easier, a little easier.
Yeah. If I may, I think that's an excellent idea you have there. Here we go.
The second item that we have here is the backhoe replacement. This hasn't been started. I know that Public Works Forum and Mahalik has done some research into the cost of purchasing a new backhoe, and it has far exceeded what we had in the budget. And there has been some discussion about potentially alternate options for purchasing a backhoe or a tool like a backhoe.
Yeah, if I may, yeah. Yeah, so to do like credit a research into what the cost of a new backhoe is, which is really expensive. I think the lowest one about $40,000 over $200,000. A lot of consideration about this tool that we use, and if it is actually needed for a stall, can you need to have a new backhoe? And thinking about it over the past year, I, I don't know, think it's necessary to actually get a new backhoe for the amount of use that we're using it for. I think the backhoe we have right now is not mechanically in bad shape as far as the engine and the transmission and stuff like that. It just needs some work in the pins and bushing and stuff like that, which I think is all doable to fix maybe the backhoe we have right now and, and just move forward with the backhoe we have. I, I was aware in options of maybe getting like a mini hoe and a trailer, too, which I'm waiting to get back on some pricing for that stuff of what the cost of a mini would be. But yeah, same. I, I just don't think a new backhoe is what it sounds like. I think what we have does work, and the use we do use it. And the need for digging up emergency lines and stuff like that, if we fix what we have, we can carry forward if there are any barriers or that.
If I may.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, that's a lot of money, isn't it? If we spent 1,500 bucks, bought some tools and some grease and some stuff, do you think CAO Nelson Smith could keep it running for a limited amount of time?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, oh, it's, it would be a substantial amount of money. I could go and be, be, if I'm guessing, guessing right now, like well over 10 grand to get all the everything line board and, and bush properly and stuff like that. But again, if we do carry forward during that, we'll have a nice machine that can come and send, and that would last us for 10, many years.
Yeah, that'd be my thought, too. So in this case, we go with the recommendation, or do we make a motion? Let's make it, we'll put some money aside for repairs and, and get that going right away instead of pushing it on later?
Yeah, that's, I, I'd make a motion there. So in agreeance with Mr. Mahalik, I would I'd move that we strike the backhoe replacement from our, from our schedule, from our budget, and make room for an allocation of money for repairs to the current machine. I'd really like that. And yeah, I'll move that.
Second round.
Any discussion we're having?
You mean to write that up?
No, I'm in agreement. I like that idea.
Very good. One more discussion, man. I'll hit this. I call a question. Anyone opposed? I declare it's carried.
All right, the next item on the list is Starlink for the Public Works Yard and the landfill. Our recommendation right now is to carry forward into 2026 as a placeholder until further discussions can occur. And what that means is we believe there's a, a larger discussion to be had about switching internet service providers to solely using Starlink rather than using some ragged edge, some Starlink. We've noticed some interruptions to our service with ragged edge and feel like there could be maybe a report come forth to council with further details on that. Because it's kind of, it's part of a larger conversion project.
So we, I don't go with the recommendation. So we, I don't go with the recommendation, ma'am?
But I, I think so, um. What, what's, what's happening with the, uh? The, uh, 260, uh? Does anybody know anything, just off the? Yeah? Through to, uh, C A O Nelson Smith?
Please, in the light, ma'am, sir. Thank you. Um, is my understanding that C A O David Beach from the Southern Regional District is going to be at the November 25th council meeting, um, to discuss the, the future of, of City West and Connected Coast in regards to Zavala's?
He's going to be at Army?
Yes.
But like in person?
Uh, probably on teams.
Yeah, yeah, cool. Well, that's really good.
Well done. Wow. That's good.
Clearness information.
Yeah, that is, thank you.
When is that happening?
Keep asking those tough questions. I'm sorry, Brian, say again?
Yeah, to the C A O through the chair, I'm just wondering when that was happening about the update on the, um, fiber optic. Thank you very much.
Regular meeting. Who? Any opposition to the next two recommendations?
Sir. Um, thank you, Chair. Um, council may want to consider increasing the, um, the, the budget for the SCADA repairs. Um, just, uh, prior, before, before post this report being written, um, our Public Works Department has struggled immensely in getting a, a proper connection with the, uh, system. And maybe you can elaborate a little bit more for council's benefit.
Yeah, so ever since this, uh, last lightning storm, uh, two weeks ago now, we've, uh, basically, state system has not worked at all. We've been pumping mad newly, um, trying to fix it. I brought in SCADA tech, uh, yesterday with an electrician. They also struggled to get it on the system and be able to read the code and everything that's going on in the computer. I'm waiting to hear back from them on quotes for new numbers to basically get a new system in place. We would be using some old parts of what we can, bring down the cost of that, but simplifying it, using parts that are on the shelf and, and getting rid of what we have right now and start the fresh. You know, um, this has not been in place since 2021, it's not very long, which is unfortunate, but it just hasn't, it's false. I'm hopefully going to get some numbers and some quotes over the next couple of weeks that I can present to you guys and we can move forward or hopefully get some SCADA system up and draw and help our system in place.
Well, so, um, would you consider these little issues to be a good experience for you on learning how to take the thing apart and put it back together? Or would you describe it another way like, it's just gonna fix it?
In, in both ways, it's good, it's good to learn and then, um, go have a couple of few things in the half, learn a ton and ton about the system. Coming into something that I've never worked with before, but at the end of the day, it's a water system. I want it to work properly. I don't want to have issues with that. I don't want to have any emergencies, but you have emergencies, we need that as a workflow. Yeah, I'm working properly for the health and safety for all of our systems.
See, answer I was looking for, mister. Thank you very much. So will you make a motion to?
I'd, I'd like to, uh, have another question. Oh, yeah. So through to, uh, to, um, with your last comment there, I, like, aren't we just taking a shot in the dark? Raise it, like, should we wait till we know where we're gonna be at?
Thank you, through to, uh, mister.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Um, I just, I didn't want it to go bypass without the council having an opportunity to, to discuss it.
Cool, cool. We can raise it like a million dollars and then see what happens. But you're going to give it like, like $5 and see what happens. So really we can just wait and see what the number comes out as, right?
Any ideas, mister?
Fun ideas?
Yeah.
I'm guessing in the 25,000. I think that's a little bit high, but yeah.
There goes your raise. That's it. Uh, well, can I have a motion toward 25,000?
Yeah, we can do that. Put a, I, I, I knew that, uh, we carry forward the, uh, SCADA repairs for the 2026 budget and raise the amount to, uh, not more than $25,000. A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Anyone opposed? No, I declare it's carried. And if I may, um, I think that's good. I think we should try to take care of these problems as soon as possible and not stretch them out. To me, the water system's kind of high on the list.
Necessarily.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. So, thank you for bearing with me, council people, but, um, I'll try to make things go a little faster now. Public Works Building will follow the recommendation? Okay. Declaring an assessment.
Anybody, uh, play me? Through to, uh, on the staff, does it, what, what did that number start at? It is? Yeah, it's pretty high.
Thank, uh, it started at 60,000.
Oh, is that all? Okay. It's real low waste of gold.
Well, reading the rest of the page here, I am inclined to agree with all the recommendations. Um, I did have a couple of questions here.
Please?
Yes, please, through to, uh, C O. Uh, the fire department's road rescue, extraction, equipment, ropes and harness equipment. Um, I think we can. Uh, uh, first of all, is there any grant funding being applied for at this time?
Not at this moment, no, Counselor Janice, but it, it is something that, if it's in the budget, we would focus on, uh, on, on supporting um, staff research and grant funding.
Um, I, I, I don't feel like those are important things to carry forward myself. I mean, I, I could let him go, but I, I want to explain myself quickly. Is it? None of the fire department has any training on these things? And none of the, none of the road rescue extraction or, or would probably happen within our jurisdiction here. So I, I just, I, I think we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit. If we apply for a grant for these things, when we don't have anybody who's trained to do them. So we might want to have a look at that because what does happen with this equipment also is the second you buy it, it's got an expiration date of 10 years every. So if nobody has any training and it takes them a year and a half or two years to get to the point where anybody even has any training, it's kind of a waste of money. So you know, maybe we should, uh, be careful of how we approach this because if we end up with a grant that has an expiry date on it also, then it's kind of gonna become a kerfuffle unless we are trained and ready to follow through with if we're needed in this kind of situation. So that's just my two cents on it. I mean, I know it's obviously not even close to being anything. Maybe, maybe we should try to ask the fire department to implement the training first so that, so that we have a reason to make these, you know, purchases at $50,000 at least. So in, in, uh, you know, if, if, if we got 10 years of equipment, it's, it's, it's $5,000 a year, we're gonna be losing it, nobody can even use it. Thank you.
May I have a motion on that? Counselor Lewis?
We just recommend it, carry forward to 2026. It's not started, it's, uh, grant fund is not sourced.
Twenty. Twenty, I hope that's all.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm just wondering if we couldn't just add a little something on there to require to get a report from the fire department. When do you think people might get trained for this? Or we have anything in the works or?
Um, I need, uh, advice on that. Mm-hmm, the C A O, is that you? Yes, Counselor Lewis.
Um, I would think that the training will cost money. Um, probably quite a bit. So there would have to be someplace in the budget for that training.
Okay, so we'll just carry it forward and tend to deal with it as time goes on. We'll talk to the fire department and see if, maybe ask C A O Nelson Smith to discuss it with the fire department and, and come up with some kind of game plan that maybe that's.
Will you motion for it?
Yeah, I need myself a note.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Deputy Deputy, can you help me out here in, uh, page four? Yep.
On page four, yeah, so we're still in the higher priority project list. Uh, next up is the S C B A upgrades. Uh, this hasn't been started, however, there was a, a grant application that was approved by council. I believe it was at the last regular meeting. Uh, so our recommendation is to carry it forward to 2026.
Very important.
Very. Uh, we also, oh.
Yes, sir. Um, thank you. Council may want to consider even, uh, um, looking for more funding or even putting aside some funding for further S C B As because based on the last report that was presented, the, uh, $50,000 was for, I do believe it was four units. Um, and, uh, and with attack teams, you typically have two teams of three on, on an attack team to, uh, to, to properly attack a fire. So that's six S C B A right there. Um, if you have a, a proper attack team. Now, not to mention the, the bottles that need to be replenished as, as you go through air.
How many, uh, firefighters do we?
Uh, currently nine on roster, six.
Six trained?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. But I think that makes a lot of sense. As in, if you got six S C B As and six firefighters, then it was adding up really good. Yeah, that's good. So I would, I would move that, uh, we extend that, uh, funding to be able to accommodate six units, six S P C B A units to the, if we need, uh, help, we, we, we can get it properly. But do you have a motion? That makes sense to you?
Yeah, just for clarification for the funding source for that additional amount, was that looking to be grant funding as well?
For now.
Yeah.
I think so, yeah.
It does seem to be a pretty steady, uh, steadily occurring grant that comes up every fall, that four equipment that that could fall.
Yes, Counselor Lewis. Action on the table.
Second.
No, we said we did.
Second.
We did second, okay.
Second.
And that's what we're doing. Be help. Be help.
It's good to work as a team.
Yeah.
Discussion on something.
Um, on the, uh, S C D As. So the grant is already in for the 50,000?
Correct.
And if we get that, then we can buy four.
Correct.
How important is it to get the other two without waiting for a grant? How vital is it? My concern is, shouldn't we be putting money in the budget for the other two? Or?
I, I, I would have to confer with our, our fire chief based on what I know of fire attacks, given that we only currently have six members. Um, that would be, if everybody were to show up, you could have two attack teams of two, um, which isn't highly recommended, but you could do it. And then you still need somebody to run the pumper, um, and then, and then have got an extra person.
Yeah, I just wanted to know how, how vital is it is for all six of them to have it?
But my, my recommendation would be the sooner we can get six, the better. Um, S C B As are one of the most vital pieces of equipment a firefighter can have.
Yeah, that's what my concern was.
Yes, and I tend to agree with you, Counselor Lewis. This is a town built on old, dry wood. We need all the power the fire department can get. So I would ask for a recommendation or a, a motion that we oh, sorry, yeah, that we will entertain after we do this motion that's on the table. Anyone opposed to the motion on the table? And declare it carried. Now, I move that, uh, we request staff to put the money we need to get more S C B As in the budget.
Second. Thank you. Pretty good?
Any discussion? Hearing none? We call a question, anyone opposed? Fire Security. Thank you. Okay, Deputy Dean.
All right, so next on the list is, uh, Zavala's Campsite Upgrades, which is current work in progress. And our recommendation is to carry that forward to 2020.
Next.
Uh, next is Trail Expansion and Remediation, which is also a project that is currently in progress. And our recommendation is to carry it forward to 2026.
And a question to the captain, ma'am. I see you finally got your wood. So we're going full speed ahead now.
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Mark trucking away. No doubt. Okay, so I think that one's good. Now, I don't know, we'll just carry on.
All right, so the lower priority projects, uh, we have, uh, replaced garbage dumpsters, which we currently have in the, uh, slated, well, it was from 2025. Uh, it hasn't been started. We have been, uh, notified that it is ineligible under the Climate Action Fund, which is what we had as the funding source. Uh, we've also identified that it may require further discussion because of the upcoming, uh, scheduled landfill closure and the Because of the upcoming, uh, scheduled landfill closure and the. Possibility of considering third site pickup as opposed to communal bins. Um, so. Our recommendation is to consider moving it forward to twenty twenty seven as a placeholder until further discussions can occur on that.
Yes, sir. Due to, uh, Mr. Hallack. Um. Not unlike we did with the, uh. Garbage truck and what you're trying to guess do with the, uh, tobacco. Is it? Would it be probably smart to do repairs on these instead of?
Yeah. Counselor Janice, I recently actually, I was working with the while we could get on some quotes and we went through every single bin in our. Community to see the deficiencies and where the issues were. They're all fixable of the current ones that we have in place and used right now, they're all fixable. Um, the fifteen thousand dollars actually doesn't even buy us one bin that I'll argue show to roll, rollings and, and who we use hollow and stuff and. Uh, a new bin actually more than that. Purchase one, so I think with the bins we have in place and the shape they're in. We just record or fix them up and use what we have for now, should have been even. Up so.
Sounds great. Thank you. Do we need more money to fix them than? Here, okay, good. Next.
A municipal dock upgrade engineering report, uh, this is something that, um. Hasn't been started yet as grant funding has not been sourced for it. Our recommendation is to combine the, um, municipal dock. Upgrade engineering report with the municipal dock seating area, which is slated for twenty twenty six. Along with the fish cleaning station for the municipal dock, which is also slated for twenty twenty six and move them all to twenty twenty seven. Makes sense.
I'd the pro, uh, I wanted to make some. Then, uh. Through your energy, would like to donate something to our community. Probably get. From where, between five and ten thousand dollars for a project that. Uh, help everybody. And, uh. We were talking about this, uh, seating area and plus fish cleaning station was potential. I know, uh. I don't know if this is the right time to break it up, but. How would we go about that? Who, uh? Does he?
Thank you, um, I, I would recommend if we just take it offline, uh, come in and see when you have an opportunity.
Right on.
And, yeah. Okay, we can give it back.
Sounds good. Yeah, that's a great idea. Now, if I may, a question to Deputy. You've been paying attention to the news lately in British Columbia. It seems that. The amount of money available for a lot of things has kind of disappeared. You expect that's going to affect any of our grants?
Hard to say, it, it, it seems like every so often there, the province releases an unconditional grant for, you know, I'm thinking of like the growing communities fund. Uh, the COVID restart grant that we saw, so. There seems to be like usual injections of unconditional funds that come through. Uh, we've seen the return of this strategic priorities fund recently, which is a, a positive thing. I, I. Don't know if the Nelson Smith has any further comment to that.
Thank, thank you. I think, uh, um. I agree with the, with Deputy Janice, um. There have been announcements at U V C M, um, that some of the U V C M grant funding is, uh, going to. Dry up a little bit, um, but there is often federal funding and other provincial funding that, uh, that does crop up, so.
Yeah, good, so. It's just up to us to be diligent and chase these grants.
Correct.
Because, as you know, I've been doing a very, well, triple A job at the hospital meetings and the waste management meetings. And I've noticed that money's getting tight. It, it really is, and. Promises that the provincial government made two years ago. They're gone. They, uh. They changed, changed course totally. But that's encouraging that if there's still grants and stuff out there. Let's chase them. Cause otherwise. That isn't going to be fixing a water supply for a long time. And it's going to be cutting down cedar in the backwoods to make these little boardwalks in the park. But, um, all kidding aside, thank you for the information.
Yeah. Here it is.
All right, so we're now on to, uh, twenty twenty six. And, uh, under the higher priority projects, we have the, the new mower, a new mower. Um. Currently, we have fifteen thousand dollars in the capital plan for the new mower, but upon further research, we have. Uh, noted that it is likely doubled across that, so our recommendation is to keep it in twenty twenty six. But increase the amount to thirty thousand.
Counselor Copeland, are you able to hear everything okay still?
Yeah, oh, yes, I am. I'm just following along here quite nicely. I did have a question about tomorrow, though, I should hear from the, um. Um. We, how bad is this mower? Cause it's kind of essential.
Uh, just our current mower that we have right now is, uh. Uh, I'm sure the year that it was purchased, um. But it has an unreal amount of hours. I want to say six thousand hours, which is a lot of hour for a little mower that size, um. I would say it was down four times this year with parts to be repaired. Um, I think it's just kind of that we get. I know thirty thousand dollars is quite expensive for a mower, but. For given how much grass we cut, I think getting a very stout. And, um, and kind of commercial grade mower will really pay benefits or develop as well.
Thanks, I kind of, I, I, I'm kind of thinking that we need this thing as a, to keep things moving along. Um, I don't know about sliding it to the right at all now, kind of convinced, maybe we should just go and buy it. Comments?
Yes, I tend to agree with you, counselor. There's very few things we can do in this town that don't cost a fortune. But you notice. If the grass is capped. And you're painted. New boardwalks in the, the trails. It don't cost that much, but they really get noticed, so. I think a new mower, mower is a good idea. Anyone else?
Hopefully agree.
I agree. Just the house doing business. So what would you recommend Deputy, Deputy? You want us to? Give some more money right now for the mower?
Well, in the recommendation, we do have it as increase the amount to thirty thousand dollars, so if council has another idea for that. Then a motion would be a good plan.
Thirty grand do the trick? Okay, so we'll keep the recommendation and move along.
All right, so we have the rental trailer, which is the, uh, um. The mobile home that is currently rented out to V H O. Um, and that, that, uh, we currently have in the capital plan as thirty thousand dollars. Our recommendation is to keep it in twenty twenty six, but decrease the amount to ten thousand. And that's to, uh, to meet a more realistic cost of the project.
I think, uh. That's reasonable, uh, uh, I, I think we spend quite a bit of money on that. Trailer. It's, it's gotta be pretty cheap right now. Yeah, this would like finish it off, I'm assuming, right?
Yes, my idea is like really tackling the outside, um, I'll have to redo a bunch of skirt and, uh, wood and stuff underneath the skirt for the back end and. Get a paint job on and really, um, make outside appealing and nice and that, like you're saying, that we've done all that work. In the last three years on the inside, so I really think this, this, uh. This property will be in great shape after we finish this.
That's really cool.
I agree. Move along.
All right, so we also have fire department exercise equipment, thirty five hundred dollars in twenty twenty six for that, and our recommendation is to keep that in twenty twenty six.
Next.
Go. Oh, where do you come?
What kind of exercise equipment are they looking for?
Don't know.
I think mostly they want some free weights.
Yes, sir. It is a discussion I would have to have with the fire chief, um, just to, so councils where liability wise, um, this is something I went through in the fire department I was on. Um, prior to using any sort of exercise equipment, there does have to be certified training done, and each member that gets to use the equipment has to be. Signed off on by a certified trainer, um, otherwise liability doesn't cover. Um, any, uh, any accidents that may happen with that equipment.
So free weights would be the only. Thing we could use.
Uh, typically, they recommend universal gyms. There's a less chance of dropping something or.
Okay, sir.
Wait.
Okay. Move on.
All right, so we've got the wizard, water reservoir fence, fifty thousand dollars, um. Recommendation is to keep this in twenty twenty six. But change the funding source from grant to surplus, because this has been identified as a high priority. Safety item.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so that seems reasonably important, and will that money cover what you need to do there?
Yeah, um, actually, fine, it's a little bit high just for a fence, but given the location. And what the reservoir is mounted on the rock and have you adding gates and everything else, it will be quite costly, but it is important to. Secure, I think our water source and, um, make sure it's safe.
Yeah, and you're gonna want some help. You're not gonna want to do the fence all by yourself.
No, no.
Okay, next, Little Zaballas.
Little Zaballas Trail Bridge, uh, there's currently sixty thousand dollars in the capital plan for that grant dependent. Our recommendation is to keep it in twenty twenty six, but there, uh, will be, uh, council, a report to council coming forth. Uh, relating to different accesses. For the Little Zaballas Trail, whether that be bridge or, um, accessing it around the back of Ferris Road. Uh, so. Our recommendation at this point is to keep it in twenty twenty six, uh, but that could possibly change based off of. Counselor decides from that report.
That makes sense to me.
Uh, next item is resurfacing this gate park. And basketball court upgrades, uh, it appears in the twenty twenty six capital plan that these items were merged together, and I can't quite remember if that was. Because there have been discussion about. Possibly. Moving or, or resurfacing at the time that that was put in the plan. Uh, but our recommendation is also to keep that in twenty twenty six, um. Noting that it is dependent on council's decision based off of the report to council that you had just seen.
All good. Okay, next.
Uh. The Senate Tap. We have ten thousand dollars in the budget for Senate Tap, um. Our recommendation is keep that in twenty twenty six, but change the funding source to be split between surplus and grant. Um, that is because our understanding is that. There are grants out there where we would pay a portion of it and the other half be, or portion be covered by grant funding. Um, and that, that amount may need to be increased based off of, uh, quotations that. We source.
If I may, Counselor Copeland. This is our baby here, the Senate Tap. Ten thousand dollars. Twenty twenty six. You think we can get it done?
Not without additional, um, funding, uh, the grants that we, we need to know more about the grants. How much we're gonna get, how much we're gonna have to pay back. I don't think the ten thousand will do it by itself, but I still have to solicit. Legions and, and, um, military sources to see if we can get any more money out of them, aside from any grants that, uh, we can come up with. I'd really, really like to see it done by, um, twenty twenty six November.
Yeah. Hey, so can I dump most of this on you?
Consider it dumped.
Ah.
You're responsible. No, counselors are not yours. So.
No.
No. You're supposed to talk to people.
Yes.
Very good. I love it. Counselors would like C O's, they don't really get their hands dirty. Did I say that?
That was your inside voice.
Okay, next.
All right, the next four items are all what we propose to be additions to the twenty twenty six, uh, capital plan. The first being lot five oh one, phase one of the capital works. We currently have a grant application for. Uh, the DRIF grant, and I couldn't tell you what that acronym stands for off the top of my head, P E C A.
Disaster Risk Innovation Fund.
Disaster Risk Innovation Fund. Um, and that, uh, the budget for that is one point eight, uh, million dollars. And our recommendation is to add that to twenty twenty six. As the grant application has already been submitted.
Sounds good.
The next item is the East Side, uh, Gravity Fed Sewer Design, which has also been a grant. Application to the Strategic Priorities Fund, um. For two hundred and twenty four thousand, and our recommendation is also to add that to twenty twenty six. Uh, the next addition is the Parks Master Plan, which has been a topic at the council table as of late. Um, we estimate that's going to cross about thirty five thousand dollars. And could potentially be funded through the growing communities fund, uh, at council's will. And our recommendation is to add that to twenty twenty. Uh, the final addition here is the overflow bridge abutment repair. There was an assessment done on the overflow bridge, and out of the assessment report, there was a recommendation to, um, repair the abutment. Uh, and that has been, uh. Recommended to be included because it is, uh. An urgent repair. Uh, for two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. The funding source there, it is currently listed to be determined, I think that there. Will need to look into see where that could fit within our reserves or, um. Other grant funding. So our recommendation is to add that to twenty twenty as well. How we can bring that, uh, funding source forth at a, at the next budget meeting. Uh, if you look to the next page, we're onto the lower priority projects in twenty twenty six. Uh, the first being the village office flooring and joists repair. We currently have. Thirty thousand dollars in the budget. Uh, for that, and our recommendation is to remove that from the capital plan.
Yes. Counselor Lewis.
Through the chair to. The deputy. Janice. Um. The Joyce Repair, isn't that. I know it's classified as low priority, but I would think that um. That should probably be something that's pretty high priority.
It's a a discussion that we had in office here was to maybe include it as part of a larger office renovation. So I, yeah, I mean.
I mean, you know, floors. We keep carving, but the Joyce Repair is pretty vital.
You look at. No, and. Like I haven't actually gone and then called under and bed my eyes on this joy, so I feel like. I'm not even sure actually where the Joyce Repair thing either comes from or or who's. Know that we need. There we need new joy. So yeah, there's some soft spots on the floor, but I'm not one hundred percent positive at this point that all the joys considered repaired. It's huge work done.
Yes. Counselor Goldwyn.
Thank you. Um, I'm saying that structuring, I'm thinking that structuring of uh. Of our um infrastructure is really important, safety of the employees, um liability for anybody that. Comes to the place, I think. I don't, I don't, I can't see how it can be removed from the capital plan unless they've missed something. Like, is it, is it going to be included in any major renovation? Have we, have we considered that? It it sounds like that's what's going on. If we're gonna renovate the office itself, we'll just throw this in with it. But by itself, I think it's necessary.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just to uh for Counselor Copeland and Counselor Lewis to reiterate uh what uh what our public works for and saying is. We've actually never had an official determination that any joyce need to be replaced. We don't have a a report. Um, on this building, so um none of us in administration are sure where this came from originally. To be on the budget, which is uh which is why our recommendation is to uh uh remove it from the capital plan. Or maybe at the very least budget to get the building assessed for um. Or a- any sort of fundamental. Uh, capital repairs.
Very good. Another question, sir?
Uh, no, not really a question. I just um. Village flooring. I guess we need an assessment for the billing. If there's been any concern whatsoever, it would be negligent to look the other way if we even suspect something is. Is uh inappropriate for the building structure. Um, yeah, maybe we should have a report done.
Yes. Well, if. In my mind. Even if nothing's wrong, it would still be worth having. Uh, Public Works Forum. Roll around underneath the building and see what he can see and uh give us a full report if if necessary. But that's the key. I think that's the key.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah.
I I that.
Where are we gonna put that into a motion, do you think?
I think we have a. A professionalism needed in house already.
Mm hmm, yeah.
Just uh. Exercise that maybe a little bit and and then see if there's anything that's uh potentially. Like Counselor Copeland says, you know, yeah, it's a threat to anybody, you know, especially to anybody's safety. Really, that's what it comes down to, so.
So may I direct to C O Nelson Smith to write a note to. Uh, Public Works Forum?
Can we? I get my hands on it here.
Yeah. That's me getting a budget some new uh.
He can't even tie, he could use one of those S T B.
This is working out better than we thought, Brian.
Just to confirm on that, and is that something council would like to keep in twenty twenty six until?
Yes.
Yeah.
Please, thank you.
All right.
Okay, carry on Deputy V.
The next is the village office yard. Uh, uh, which is uh the draining and landscaping of the village office yard. Currently, we have thirty thousand dollars in the budget for that. Our recommendation is to move that forward to twenty twenty eight and lower the amount to ten thousand dollars.
Terrifying. Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, for for all of council. The lower priority projects, the reason that we're recommending um that they be removed or deferred. Is uh looking at what twenty twenty six is holding for us as staff and our in our limited capacity. Um, so uh although we're looking at these individually, um I I would request the council also look at our capacity as as a whole. Um, we've added four new projects um. With the lot five oh one, um with the potential for the east side sewer review. Um, with a twenty twenty six uh local general election coming. Um, that some of these we just simply may not have time to do, so it's uh. It's uh we're we're trying to be strategic about uh about having these things forward.
Yeah, um. Yes, I'm looking at all these and uh. I understand you can only stretch your manpower so far. Uh. And it's not something I do very often or lightly, but I'm gonna have to agree with you on this. Um. Think all these recommendations. Are good recommendations, and we just go right through.
I I'd like to speak on that also. Yes, I absolutely agree with you. I mean, these are all things that we all discussed. And and, you know, being. Been such a small. Small staff, you know. We, I I appreciate what's happened here with these recommendations because. We can't, we can't feel this out like you guys can at all. But uh. So I I would agree that we can continue forward and uh the drainage, landscape drainage, we do have another professional in house now too. But that, so that's really, yeah, really professional. Things are looking up.
Here you are, Deputy V.
All right, we've got convert village office attic into an apartment, sixty thousand in the budget for twenty twenty six. Uh, that's. Funded by a grant that is yet to be determined, and we recommend to move that to twenty twenty eight.
Perfect. Okay, now take advantage of your speed reading course and take us right to the bottom of the page.
Okay. Would you really like me to?
Nope, we're going to follow all these recommendations, so we just go next page now. Twenty twenty seven?
We're on, still on twenty twenty six?
Oh, sorry, yeah. The next page is the twenty twenty six. Okay. I I'm I'm agreeing with all those.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a little glitch.
We uh just to point out, we did have um. We're hoping for some further clarification from council on the clear first lot on Kino Crescent. Uh, there's currently fifteen thousand dollars in twenty twenty six. And we don't have a recommendation for that item because we were hoping for some clarification on what uh. What the actual works were for that item.
Um, I could speak to that a little bit. Come in. What are you gonna do? That lot. Was posing. A lot of danger trees. And uh very overgrown. And it was uh. Potentially. Causing a hazard, so I think what we came up with was to just clear the whole thing. And if I'm over right, there might have been somebody in there already. Who um. Who uh. Cleared some of. The trees. Oh, yeah. Yeah. So that's what, that's what all I keep from my week.
I think. Yes, I have a little map here.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, through the chair to our counselor Janice. Um, I I think the clarity that we're looking for is it's um. Bring an excavator in and uh and mow it down to a field or just remove some of the danger trees and and brush by hands. Um, that's sort of the direction that we're we're looking for to ensure that uh we're we're following council's mission. Right, um. I think the idea was to, like, especially if we're gonna get a new lawnmower. To uh to to clear it and and and. Keep it as a grass. I think there's grass already in our stable there. And open deep, whatever it is, as long as it's kept safe, right? I don't wanna see these uh these these tall alders that are falling on the houses wanted to in. Is the, that's the most important part to me. For the powerless, sure. Well. On this, I move. That we get. A machine in there, yes.
Thank you. Uh, through the chair to Counselor Janice. Uh, there is already um fifteen thousand dollars in the twenty twenty five budget for an arborist to come and remove danger trees. I don't know if that's been that way.
Yeah, I'm taking to that a little bit. So, yeah, there's fifteen thousand dollars in the budget this year for uh danger trees, and. I'm hoping to get uh R Q out here in the next couple of weeks. With that, my plan was to tackle. I think I was talking about there's about six danger trees specifically, and they're all alders that really do need to come down that are. Posing a risk to houses and and ones that are closer to that hydroline there. My plan is to deal with those ones this year and then. Yeah, whatever you guys feel like moving forward if you want that whole lot cleared. And um also on that too, to clear that lot, I've done quite a bit of walking around in there. It's. Not gonna be just as easy as clearing the trees and then growing grass. There's lots of soil. Degradation in there. It's low, there's low points, it's kind of swampy mix up there, so it'd be quite a substantial job in there to get that to a grassy field.
Okay, that being said, I would still like to clear that it. Get it down in um. Doesn't matter if we can plant grass or not, but let's get rid of any liability that's there, and it gives us a head start to do something. You know, someone might wanna buy that lot. You never know. But uh we've been talking about clearing that off for a few years now.
Couple of weeks, yeah.
Get it down. Okay, okay, so I move that. Do I get a second? Yeah, I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Thank you. No discussion, any opposed? Fire. Eric.
Fair enough. Yes, in review of time and how much agenda is left. Um, did you want to move on from from this because it's twenty twenty seven onward?
Let's do that. Good suggestion, sir.
Yeah. Believe believe that for my next council.
Yep. I think we've done a fine job up to now, don't you? Deputy D?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed with the.
Oh, quality, I I just recommended that uh we postpone review in twenty twenty seven beyond just uh in review of how much time you have.
Yes, we did enough damage already, so. That did the chair was fall asleep? Could be. Grandfather clock. Okay, now how would I word this? We will. Delay the. Capital plan. Till a subsequent meeting?
Yeah, there's a motion for that. Uh, Deputy Janice just um. Mentioned that there's not very much left to go, so it's the, it's up to council whether you want to finish the meeting or defer to another meeting.
Okay. How much is not very much?
This page. This page.
Okay, we'll do it. Okay.
All right, project slated for twenty twenty seven. Uh, library, library interior upgrade and renovation, which includes flooring, paint and bathroom. Currently in the plan for sixty thousand dollars. To be grant funded, our recommendation is to move it to twenty twenty six and change the funding source to growing community fund.
Let's do it. Take the recommendation and move along.
Next is sewer pipe camera. We have currently eight thousand dollars in the budget for that. Our recommendation is to move it to twenty twenty six and change the funding source solely to sewer reserve.
Good, next.
Uh, next is R C M P station, add a residence and replace the ramp. We currently have sixty thousand in the plan for that, and our recommendation is to keep it in twenty twenty seven.
Agreed.
Fire department resurfacing of the engine room floors, thirteen thousand in the budget, recommendation, keep it in twenty twenty seven.
Here we are.
An addition is the Sugarloaf Bridge Barrier Post Replacement. This is something that came out of the assessment of the Sugarloaf Bridge as a higher priority item. Um, currently have fifty thousand in the budget for that, or do we, I like to add fifty thousand dollars in the budget for that. Um, and add it to twenty twenty seven with the funding source to be determined at this moment.
What's the barrier question?
It's the posts that are. On the.
Yeah, like the galvanized metal barrier that is the barrier between the walkway, professional walkway and where you got.
Yeah. Thank you.
And it needs to be replaced, aren't we?
It um. I'm not sure if there's some source of water or not, but all the bottom abutments are blown up. It's very, each ceiling has cracked and blown.
Uh, when I hit it with the top tether?
Yeah. You're not pointing to anything.
It's that hard, it's been hit by me, but.
No, no, it's it's the whole line. It's like. The only, the only way I could say, it's like water got into it and has frozen and has exploded each. The bottom base of it.
There'll be a warranty on the bridge.
It's like just out of heart, yeah. Yes, let's schedule. Thank you. Okay, next.
Next item, lower priority project, village office kitchen upgrade, currently ten thousand in the budget, and our recommendation is to remove that from the capital plan. Um, our current kitchen is sufficient for staff's needs.
Okay.
Uh, next is solar energy for all buildings, currently five five hundred thousand in the capital plan, and uh our recommendation is to move that to twenty thirty.
Thank you.
Next page is project slated for twenty twenty eight. Higher priority project, fuel tanks for public work yard. We currently have ten thousand in the budget for that. Our recommendation is to move that to twenty twenty six.
Yeah.
The concession stand, there's currently twenty five hundred dollars slated for twenty twenty eight, and our recommendation is to keep that as. The concession stand, there's currently twenty five hundred dollars slated for twenty twenty eight and our recommendation is to keep that as is. Garbage truck replacement. We have in the budget for two hundred eighty five thousand dollars through an MFA loan. And we recommend keeping that in twenty twenty eight as well. Uh, the fire hall expansion. Uh, we have in the budget seventy five thousand dollars and our recommendation at this time is to keep it in twenty twenty eight. Think we had some further clarification that we needed from the fire chief on that as well. We can move on?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, lower priority project. Community hall projector displaying, five thousand dollars and our recommendation is to move that to twenty thirty. Trailer, uh, we have ten thousand in the budget for that. And our recommendation uh is to remove that from the capital plan. As per discussions with uh public works form and Mahalik. And last but not least, uh, mountain bike park, we currently have in the budget three hundred thousand. Our recommendation is to remove that from the capital plan.
You? Good.
And we currently don't have um any items in our current capital plan for twenty twenty nine or twenty thirty.
Good one.
The very last page are some other considerations for inclusion. Uh, perhaps this is something that any public work form and Mahalik would like.
Yeah, I think um, uh, playful gear located at the village office and our friend Jack. Yeah. Good way to. I think it was actually brought forward by one of the council members, if I don't, if I remember correctly. Recommending that to me, I think it'd be important to have a, a Canadian flag display there in the village.
And your opinion on the value of these? Do they all high priority or getting close over to the right there, sir? Yes. What do you think?
Sorry.
They're all worth it?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
I would definitely say uh the gutters are even more than high priority. Like, that's like absolute necessity around here. Yeah, uh, no kidding. Yep. And as we've talked about before, we gotta keep our own stuff up to speed. Yeah, no, but nobody else is gonna do it, you know? No, so I move that we include. All, one, two, three, six of these considerations for inclusion to the budget. I would second that. Okay. Any discussions? Well. Anyone opposed? Say it here. You're fired.
Here's the wrong first letter, it's the H.
Okay, on we go. Hey, do you think we're on par? Fifty two.
Fifty two.
Animal control.
Tonight's staff is looking for direction from council on, uh, you'll see. In the uh, in the columns, there are some questions.
Yep.
And so maybe if we just went through each of those and uh, and if council could provide feedback to the staff. On uh, on thoughts, thoughts and conclusions, and then. Any um, any recommendations for anything that may have been missed in this bylaw?
And you've, you've taken information from other jurisdictions bylaws now. Maybe uh. Best converting, you could. Yes, sir. Should we just go through everyone? Probably. Um, yeah. What would you take? Please, take aim at that. Uh. So. For. Do a. We're talking about temporary or permanent empowerment and boarding services. Uh, does council feel this is an appropriate partnership to enter into? Are we looking at which one or all of them or?
Just what, whether council um would, would be in favor of us actually entering into an agreement outside of community.
Right.
Um, this is in consideration that we don't have a count. Um. Uh, so the, the choices are, is we enter into an agreement with an external agency? Or council budgets to build a pound and get training for an animal control officer?
I would definitely suggest that we uh, we unite with another entity considering the size of us.
Yeah.
Do we need to move on? Uh, so let's keep going for them. You do, what do you think that's probably? Correct, I, I was. Sorry. Yes, sir. Open.
Here to the CIO, yeah, I've got a ton of questions about this, uh, about the bylaw. For the animal control here and it's got to do with certifications, liabilities, um. Uh. Controlling regulations, I, I just don't see it clearly in, in this. In this uh request for direction, I mean, we're, we're talking about billing. Things that we can't even control. We, we don't have official people, we don't have, we don't have a CIO running around picking up dogs off the street, that, that's ridiculous. We don't have um councilmen returning puppies to people because they got loose. There's a whole whack of questions on, on this request for direction here that I'd like to, I'd like to go over um before we even consider voting on it.
Well, in that respect, in that opinion, is it possible that? I can. Move this part of the agenda to a following meeting?
It, it's council's.
Yeah. I'd like to, what was the word, table? Table with it, defer, defer, yeah, for uh the animal control. Are here to uh, for further meeting down the road. Could you use a second or defer?
Yes.
It was so.
I just understand it and appreciate it.
Hey, all in favor, right, right?
I.
I'd declare. Pass. Now, or requests for direction on. Bylaw enforcement.
Would this also be deferred?
Not necessarily. And apart. Um, what I'm primarily looking for direction on this one is what current bylaws do we have that council feels that fines should be implemented on? Um, so you can see at the end, uh, there's a schedule of uh, um, and there's some examples of what finding looks like. Um, we have several bylaws that we could create fines under, um, but looking for direction from council. Prior to doing all of the work and including them, um, which ones council feels should be included, so that would be on page sixty. Um, key issues defined, um, staff are requesting council direction on which existing or proposed bylaws should be included in the schedule.
Did you see page six?
Yes.
Thirty, sixty one, yeah. I want that, I want that sixty.
Well.
Yeah. Mine's sixty one two, that's one, and then on the page, I'm gonna bet one. Yeah, yeah. Page sixty seven, I believe, is where we're looking at the schedule, page.
Correct.
You're sixty seven. Um. And I, I looked into this bit and. I. I would say. You know, the. The animal control. Is. It's gonna be a very difficult one in our community. So I'm gonna just. Move on from it. I mean, traffic and parking, definitely. There should be appropriate fines, suggest. Um. That's the only one I see that there definitely be. Needing fines on. The. The other ones, I think it's more of a. The more important part is the follow-up. Especially the animal control. Because we're talking about more of a public safety thing, you know, and, and, and I think that that. They should be. Taken, especially for the dogs, they should be taken away and dealt with. Or so they're fined for. Um, unsightly premises, same thing, I think that's more about uh pushing them forward. I don't know if we need to start finding, stop, start finding for that. I don't know if there's another way we can enforce that other than finding, you know?
There, there is, um, so in unsightly premises, uh, you can get a uh, um, an order through council for uh, um, staff to remediate. On our own and then charged back to the property owner. That's much more difficult than issuing the fine.
Right. But also, it's much more effective, probably.
Not necessarily.
No.
It creates hard feelings. Um, our bylaw enforcement policy is uh. Focused on voluntary compliance. Um, and, and so if we don't have any tools to push towards voluntary compliance. Um, that's where it becomes difficult. It, it gives us really only one of two options, either ignore the issue. Um, or take them to provincial court. Which is, I do believe why council voted to do this bylaw enforcement notice.
Right, right.
Is to provide staff with some more enforcement tools.
So, so uh. Through the CIO, I guess, with your experience. Are these all things that we want to create a fine for? Um, is that why they exist on the schedule?
They, they're all things that uh would be easier to find um than to, than to take to provincial court.
Right.
Um, and given that our bylaw enforcement policy is looking for voluntary compliance. Uh, typically a fine is, especially under that policy, a fine is not your go-to. Um, that's not the very first thing you do, i- it's because um the person's not voluntarily complying.
Yep.
So then it becomes a tool to help that compliance.
I got you, thank you. Yes.
Hi, just not in favor of these fines when we're talking about voluntary um cooperation. Um, noise bylaw, has, has there been anything that prompted us to take a look at this and, and to start putting in fines? I mean, Zabalas has been run on dog power, run in the streets forever. Has there been any issues, there's any problems? Firearms and hunting bylaws, fireworks, have we ever had any issues with that? We have to come up with a finding system and again isolate the uh, the citizens of Zabalas. Uh, business license bylaw is pretty straightforward, you don't pay, you don't get your license. Solid waste and recycling bylaw should wait until we see what we got for solid waste. I, I just don't think it's appropriate to go into the finding at this, uh, at this time unless it's an issue. Uh, I, I'm not sure if there's been any issues at all, thank you.
If I, if I may.
Yes.
Uh, councillor Copeland, this might have been prior to when you were on council, this uh, this bylaw is actually council direction. Um, for us to get a uh, a notice through the attorney general. Um, to allow for us to do, do findings, so this was a um, a strategic priority for council. Like I say, I think prior to uh, to you coming on board and the catalyst was, there was a petition from the residents of Zabalas. Um, to start enforcing a noise complaint bylaw. Um, and, and out of that came um the ability to find. Um, because there was no point in us having a noise control bylaw if there was no way of enforcing it. So that's sort of the very, very brief history of how this came to be.
Thank you, CIO, um, yeah, I, okay, so I understand that particular part, the uh. The uh, the noise bylaw, yeah, okay, that, that, that's been a, an issue I, I, that I'm aware of for sure. Um, I'm not sure, like I say, it's solid waste, we, we need to wait. Fireworks, firearms, hunting bylaws? I don't think that's our, our business, to be honest with you. Um, unsightly premises, well, we've been on that for a while and nobody's done anything about it yet. Um, I'm not sure finding is, is the issue if we could, because we haven't even approached some of these people about cleaning up their properties. And they haven't come back to us that I know of and said, no, we're not gonna clean up our properties, at which case maybe a fine would be appropriate. But I don't think it's been an issue other than the noise and possibly the dogs running the streets, but that's, that's just Zabalas from what I could see. Thank you.
Um. I mean, yeah, these are all things that we've talked about in the past and they all are, have been problems. And that's why they are. Right in front of us. So. Uh, also. Like the CIO just said. This is so that we are capable of doing this if it's needed after there is considerable effort to uh. Correct the situation, right? Yes, well, in the past, we've had a bylaw enforcement officer from Callwood. And his take on it was. You give people a warning, you're nice to them first time, most of them you never end up finding because. They go, okay, yeah, I will, I will comply, you don't have any trouble with me. So finding someone is down the road, it's not the first thing you do. And according to, I forget his name, but it works like a charm. He said he had very, very few problems in Callwood. So. We're getting there slowly but surely, but we have to have a fine in our back pocket. Cause some people won't comply. Simple as that. Now, on this sheet here. Racing and parking bylaw, noise bylaw. Dogs running at large, those are my pet peeves.
Dogs running in large, those are my pet peeves. If you got a dog, keep them in your yard. If you need to park and you don't have enough space, buy a pass. And surely to God, you can be quiet eleven o'clock at night. No matter what it is you're doing in your house, don't bring it out to the street. And we still have problems with that, we have problems with people that live the midnight to six. In the morning of driving around town and revving up their engines. Letting their diesel trucks idle for a half an hour at a time. Some of these things are downright disrespectful and they shouldn't be allowed to get away with them. That's my speech. Yes, counsel. Brian.
Okay, thank you very much, I, yeah, I agree that there's, there's issues with the dogs and then the noise for sure, um. We're doing a whole whack of bylaws here lately since I, since I've been on council with no bylaw officer. To go given the authority to uh, to staff and council. Um, we're going in uncharted territory, it's, it's not our job to be doing that, I do, we have a bylaw officer and we have bylaws and then we have fines. That's a structure of its own, just to put the fines in and and appoint counsel or or someone to uh. Write tickets or return dogs or impose fines is, is 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 out of, is out of our purview as far as I'm concerned. Without a bylaw officer. These bylaws are just getting to the point of being irritating, to be honest with you. Sorry about the terse words, but. Um. Yeah, I guess that's about it, there are people with running around the dogs on the street after midnight and. Of course, there's noise from industry that shouldn't be where it's located. Um, I'm not sure appointing staff and council is bylaw officers is gonna fix any of that. The other thing is it's self-imposed. See, the the C A O's acknowledged that we're we're on a. On a complaint-driven system. Well, that this doesn't work if we don't have the bylaw in place, cause no one is gonna complain officially on paper. As living proof, nobody has complained about these, these existing noises and dogs running the street, there's still. Industry running at ten o'clock at night. Our shutdown time according to our noise control bylaw, which is only proposed. Is no noise after nine o'clock, I think it was, or or ten o'clock. Things have been running till midnight. On on the main street of Zabalas for years and and nothing's been done about it because it's a complaint, complaint-driven system. So either we have a complaint system or we get a bylaw officer with a whole list of offices, offenses and fines. And that's my opinion, thank you.
Counselor.
Actually, Brian, or councillor Copeland, we do have a bylaw officer and he works under the S R D. The Strathcona Regional District.
Yeah, by bylaw officer, I'm talking local here, I mean. Oh, I don't know, what are we gonna call, call this fellow up and I, on the uh, regional district? To come and get a loose dog or something, I I'm not sure how how that works, has it worked in the past?
Can I refer to the C A O for comment on that? It's chair.
Please do.
Will the bylaw officer come from S R D to pick up the dog?
Yes, thank, thank you, um, Chair Doug, yeah, absolutely, we've had this on a number of occasions. Um, where the uh, the bylaw officer has come out, um, not just for animal control, but for other uh, unsightly premises. Um, for uh, um. Building outside permits, um, a a number, a number of different items we've had support from. The Strathcona Regional District with their bylaw enforcement officer.
Yeah, I'm not sure anything recent's come out of, come out of that, or we still wouldn't have dogs running around the street and the noise. Up to the ten or eleven o'clock at night, um, none of that's been curtailed having a regional district bylaw officer. So again, I I I suggest either we get a bylaw officer or we slow down on some of the terse bylaws coupled with fines. Thank you.
Hey, was, do we have a motion? I don't. It, not, so. Um. We're getting a big. Pastor Copeland, yes. Yes.
Yeah, if I may, I, I'd suggest it be tabled. Until we get more information.
I think we're gonna have to, would you be kind enough to give me a motion? Able. It defer, defer.
Yeah, I make a motion that we defer the uh, proposed bylaw enforcement notice by law. And until we have. Until we discuss it, the proposed changes and and then present it it further on down the road. Does that work?
I second that. Anyone opposed? Say it's carried, let's move along.
Motion for council to go in Cameron Community Church Section, thank you, please, personal information about. Identify what individual who holds or is being considered for position as an officer, employee, or agent of the municipal agent of the municipal municipality or other position appointed by the municipal municipality. And section ninety-one C labor and. Staff donations.
Second. Now, I reckon we're still under the. Number eleven, we we still have to call a question. Oh, yeah. No question on that. You opposed? Nope, carried. Now. If you're in the public question period. Nobody here, so, no.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All opposed? Any opposed? Nope, carry on.